Okay, his message was.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Today is Tuesday, June the 22nd, 2021. School board meeting. Oh, it's not the 22nd, it's Monday. I'm confused. Let's start again. I'm ready for tomorrow night, folks. Good afternoon. It is Monday, June 22nd, and we are here for a school board workshop agenda.
21st.
The 21st, 2021. And we are here for a school board workshop agenda, and the agenda today is on the agenda, we have Capital Strategies for 60 minutes, we have the FY 2022 preliminary budget, and then we have the meeting agenda for Tuesday, June 22nd. So, we will begin today, and if our presenters will please introduce themselves, and we will move forward. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We always look forward to being here. Hello, everyone. I'm Carol Green with Capital Strategies.
I'm Ashley Stace with Capital Strategies.
And I know that we've had the opportunity to work with you all now for about three years. I've enjoyed our relationship with each and every one of you, and have an opportunity today to, on a more formal basis, go over some of the highlights of some of the issues that we were faced with this year. Obviously, the biggest thing we were faced with was COVID. Every, every decision, every policy, every debate centered on COVID. And most of those debates and everything was actually done over the, over the internet, you know, away. We had most of the testimony that was handled with the legislature. The doors were locked, so you either had to get special permission and be required to be there to speak to be able to get into the door, or you had to go to the Tucker Center, a couple blocks away. The Senate took all of their testimony from the Tucker Center. We were very blessed in the fact that we have a good delegation and good relationships with the folks, so we were still able to have our opportunities to get with everyone that we needed to get with. We did a lot of that prior to the, I know Ms. Jordan will remember that because I know she went to all those meetings with us, to where we had opportunity to get with everyone. So then it was just a matter of us following up, and fortunately, again, we've had great relationships there to be able to, to get on the phone and get things happen that, get things, excuse me, done that we needed to get done. So with that, I know that you all have received reports. You receive a report every week that we are in Tallahassee. You've also received your final report as required by the contract. Because of the fact that Ms. Stace is the one who actually produces those reports, she's going to go ahead and highlight some of the things there. We're certainly here to answer questions, concerns, comments, anything that you would like to have further dialogue on. But because of the fact that the reports that you have received, as you will note, were very extensive, I mean, 38 pages of detailed information. We'd had no intention of going through each and every one, so if there's one that we don't go through that you have interest in, that you need more data on, we are more than glad to, to get into, as we say, get into the weeds about those things. But at the same time, right now, I think Ashley will start out and start with some of the controversial bills and some of the really good bills, too, that we had in, well, they were good bills now. There were good bills in front of us. So again, if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you. And as Carol said, I'm sure you all read the reports every week from front to back, and I know they're exhilarating. And I could talk policy all day, but I know we only have a few minutes, so I'm going to hit the highlights. Two bills that passed that are pretty similar were civic education curriculum bills. And these bills basically revise the social studies credit requirement for high school graduation, and it requires that the United States government course include a comparative discussion of political ideologies that conflict with principles of freedom and democracy essential, essential to our nation's founding principles. Basically, what this bill does is it brings in people that were from countries that had any sort of communism in there to allow them to, these courses to talk about that. Actually, the gentleman that sponsored the bill was from Albania. So he was very passionate that students needed to learn where people are coming from countries that may have communism or conflict, and that wasn't being taught in high school classes. So that is kind of the gist of that bill, is bringing in more, I guess, of a well-rounded curriculum, if you will, into civics in high school. And the second civics education bill deals with civic literacy and teaching children or students their obligation, if you will, on being a good voter, what they need to do, what their rights are for our country, like the right to get together and protest, the voting, things like that. Make it more robust is, was the argument during the committee meetings on that legislation. One of the more controversial bills that you, I'm sure you've been hearing a lot about is the parental rights bill. And that's been given to the governor, and he has until the 26th to sign it. And we have no indication that he will not sign the bill. I'm fairly certain that he will sign that bill. And what that bill does is it gives parents essentially an enumerated rights in statute. And they have rights above and beyond what the school district, any government, or any institution has over their minor child. Including upbringing, education, oh, I'm sorry, is there a question? I'm sorry.
Could you just, when you, when you hit on those, could you put whatever, if it's a House bill or Senate bill?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
Relate to that.
Sure. I'll go back to the civics bill, House Bill 5. Representative Zika did that bill, and it was a House bill. And then the other civic bill was Senate Bill 146, and that was Senator Brandis. This bill, the parental rights bill, is House Bill 241, and that's Representative Groll. And didn't Rodriguez have that? Senator Rodriguez had that bill in the Senate. I don't have the bill number, but I mean, I can get it to you, but it's not the bill that passed, so just go with 241. And these fundamental rights of a parent are to direct the upbringing, education, healthcare, and mental health of a minor child. And in no way are those entities such as schools, school boards, local government, state, are they to infringe on those rights. And that also includes any educational materials that are given to the child or taught to the child. The parent has every right to see those materials, things of that nature. And I will say, as a parent, for this bill, this one example that I have that would be covered in this bill is one of my kids got tested for gifted, and I asked to see out of the 23 characteristics which characteristics he had qualified and what those characteristics were. And I remember the guidance counselor saying to me, I don't think I can give you those. And I said, I think you can. I think you can. So it's those kinds of things, and I do understand that there are unintended consequences with this bill, and we have been speaking to the attorney about those unintended consequences. And I really do think that some of this language will go to the courts. One of those being if you have a child that is close to their guidance counselor, or a teacher, or a principal, or somebody on staff, and they talk to that adult about sensitive information, is that adult required to tell the parent that information? And that is a huge unintended consequence of this bill, and we just don't know the answer to that yet. And it's very serious, and I think it's going to be determined in the courts.
Yeah, we had a, we had a lengthy conversation with Kathy on that last on the 17th. I don't remember what day that was, but we had a long debate back and forth. So we know that all of the attorneys across all the school districts are looking at that very seriously, too, about the ramifications there.
Yeah, there will be ramifications, I'm sure. Another big bill was House Bill 419, and that was the VPK bill. And that was moving the government and the accountability from the Office of Early Learning into the Department of Education, which is a really big deal. I mean, this bill has been around at least three years. And there was a lot more in the bill, but it got pared down at the end. But I think moving the accountability over to the Department of Education is a big move. And they're also repealed the screening and readiness methods that they use, and the Department of Education are coming up with new methods, new testing, and I think it's they do this for kindergarten, I know, but they do some testing in the beginning of the year, mid-year, and at the end of the year, and that looks like the model that they're going to take forward with VPK. So there will be a lot more that we need to look at as they start developing these rules. We need to be watching those to see what they come up with and what instruments they're using, but that was the big gist of that bill, was the accountability, and then the measurements, and then the governance of VPK changed. Oh, this was a good bill. House Bill, not, VPK was too. But this was a bill that really helped us, was House Bill 519, the Required Health Education Instruction. And this bill requires comprehensive health education curriculum for K-12 public schools to include instruction on the prevention Ms. Fisher's high-fiving, on the prevention of child sexual abuse, exploitation, and human trafficking. The bill clarifies that the comprehensive health curriculum must be age and developmentally appropriate. And this is a, this kind of went hand in hand with one of our high priorities, was the comprehensive health that we've been working on for the last couple of years, and this bill got nothing but praise. I don't even think it had a no vote. So I feel like this is a really good platform to move forward and build upon for next year, is getting some of this curriculum in place for K-12s and kind of building on that for next year, which I think we should talk about.
I would just, I would just interject at that point. At that point, too, that as soon as we started reading that bill and we got so excited about it, I know that I talked to Ms. Fisher about that briefly, too, about the, the fact that that come along. We did get out to our delegation and made sure that, especially Representative Roach, to make sure that they knew, this is really an important bill. Would you please sign on this bill, or please do whatever you can to help lift this across the finish line. So we were really happy to see this actually happen.
And it passed on the floor in the House and Senate unanimously. So, and like I said, I don't believe there was one negative vote, even in committee, so it had a lot of positive praise. The next bill was House Bill 529, and that was the Moments of Silence in Public Schools. And what this bill does is it requires each teacher during the first period of the day to set aside one to two minutes for a moment of silence. And a teacher may not suggest as to the nature of any reflection, and a student may not interfere with another student's participation. So that was a somewhat controversial bill. And it did have some no votes on the House and Senate floors. But that was around last year, so I'm not really surprised that it moved forward. It had a Republican and Democrat sponsor last year and two Republican sponsors this year, so I'm really not surprised that that bill passed. The next bill is House Bill 550, or 545, and it's materials harmful to minors. And what this bill does is it allows parents to see all of the reproductive health education curriculum that is given to students. Like, for example, I'm sure you all are well aware of these things, but my son is in sixth grade, and he had some of his health reproduction education this past year. And under this bill would be my right to look at all of that material and opt out if I did not want him to participate. But the other thing in this bill that I thought was interesting is that it requires the district school boards to annually approve all the instructional materials used to teach reproductive health or any disease, including HIV and AIDS, in an open, notice, public meeting. School districts are required to provide a process for the public review of and comment on the adoption of such instructional materials. So making that a more public affair was, I think, the big change in this bill. The next bill is what we like to call the Choo Choo Train Bill. It was Senate Bill 1028, and it started off as a very innocent charter school bill, basically giving a little bit more leeway to high-performing charter schools, allowing them to submit two applications instead of one. And it turned into a ginormous education train. There were some good things in that bill, for example, allowing our advisory committees to meet virtually instead of just in person, which is obviously something that we need with the COVID times. So we did work on getting that language in, because that was in another bill, and then it was taken out, and then we got it put in somewhere else, so that was a fun dance that we did with that. Also, the student retention language is in that bill, and it allows a parent or guardian to submit a written request that his or her K-5 public student could be retained for academic purposes during this past school year. So if you, if a parent thought that their third grader needed to be retained for another year due to this past year with COVID, they had to do a written submission, talk to the principal to allow that retention, even if the school said that he was fine to be promoted. The big controversial issue in this bill is the Fairness in Women's Sports Act. This was the transgender sports bill language that got put on this bill. And the bill specifies that athletic teams or sports designated for females, women, or girls may not open to students of the male sex. A statement of the student's biological sex on the student's official birth certificate is considered to have the correctly stated student's biological sex. That bill started out, that, this language actually is House language. The House version of this bill had always said gender-specific on the birth certificate. In the Senate, there was, was a little bit more progressive, if you will. It allowed students to have their hormones tested, and it was this whole formula of what would be acceptable, if you will, from the science perspective, of allowing this particular students to play female sports if they were male. So as you can imagine, that was a very controversial bill. And it has, this bill was signed into law on June 1st, so this is moving forward. I'm sure we're going to see some court actions of this bill down the road, but the charter school bill is where this language is.
And that bill had eventually, not eventually, that bill had technically died up till the last week. Well, several, several of these initiatives had, that went into 1028, were dead. And then all of a sudden, in the last 48, 72 hours, they, they did show up and materialize.
And then the next pretty big bill was the scholarship bill. And in our state, we have the five scholarships or voucher programs, and it's the Gardner Scholarship, McKay Scholarship, the Family Empowerment Scholarship, the Hope Scholarship, and then the Florida Tax Credit Scholarship. And basically, what this bill does is it rolls the Gardner and the McKay scholarships into family empowerment. So it, it brings from five scholarships down to three. So they didn't get rid of the Gardner and McKay, those requirements for those scholarships, they just wrapped them all into the Family Empowerment Scholarship. The other thing that they did was they expanded the scholarship amount. It used to be that students received 95% of the calculated amount, and now they would receive the full amounts of that. So, which is kind of a big deal because it did affect our budget. Those were the main big bills that I had, unless you have something.
No, I would only add that we did have a great amount of interaction with Bright Futures this year. I know you all know that. I know you experienced it here locally. They experienced it in Tallahassee. It was, it was probably one of the biggest, the transgender bill was debated, the parental rights was debated, but Bright Futures really probably got the most airtime in, in the fact. And of course, because of the fact that, that people were so vocal about that, students were so vocal about that, families were so vocal about that, it, it didn't, it didn't move. It was moving, but then it was, they were able to get it stopped. So I don't expect that that means it's gone away forever. I, I really honestly believe that there's going to be more debate about that as we go forward. So obviously, the transgender got debate for lots of, lots of reasons, and the parental rights got debate mostly because of the LGBTQ community that came forward. There was a lot of, of testimony on those bills. So there was a lot more going on than it, than it would have appeared. But we did have the opportunity, as I said earlier, to speak with Ms. DuPuy Bruno at length to go over all these bills, and I think that we came down to four or five of them that really have a lot of meaningful, we had a lot of meaningful dialogue, not that we settled everything, because the, most of those things are going to be settled in court. But still, at the same time, we had a lot of bills this year. I think we went over 32 bills with her last week, and of those 32 bills, 50% of them have already been signed. So they are, there, there's really nothing on that list that we feel is not going to be signed.
Nothing's been vetoed.
Nothing's been vetoed yet. We don't expect that there's going to be a lot of vetoes happening with any of the bills that we have in regards to education. We really believe that they're all going to be signed as we go forward. With that being said, you know, as always, we stand ready to have, have any questions that you might have, any concerns, comments, et cetera. We'll, we'll try and answer those.
Right, Ms. Gettens.
Hello.
Hi there.
Haven't seen you guys in a while. How did we fare with our list? I mean, do you do a comparison of that? Because there's some things that have been on there for a little while, and we keep putting them on, and I don't know if they've gotten any traction.
The thing, the things that we really, the things that you say, they've been on there for a little while, they're on there because every year we get another, another reach towards something. You know, accountability, you know, obviously, there's good reason to have accountability on there every time, you know, and every year, that's going to have a little different face, if you will. We were really happy to see about the health education bill, because that's one that we have had on our list for a long time. I know since Ashley and I have been representing the board in the last three years, we have really put a lot of pressure on trying to get that to happen. So we were thrilled to see that someone did that as a standalone bill this year.
Especially when there was, in the beginning, before we knew what the federal money was going to be, we kept hearing about the doom and gloom of money because of COVID. So from that perspective, looking at an appropriation, I'm actually glad that we got what we got, because it allows us to keep that ask for next year and not have to use that ask for this year. Like, we got what we wanted, and we didn't have to ask for in funding, if you will. It just got done. So that was a good thing for me.
Right. The other thing that, that we would point to is we talked about early childhood, the VPK. That was huge, and, and I can explain to you why it was so huge, because it started out so different in the Senate and House, which is what has killed it every year.
Every year.
Every year that they debate this issue, they've had the same Senator, Senator Gail Harrell and Representative Erin Groll have had that bill, and it's gotten blown up. And I can tell you where that comes from, actually. I mean, obviously, a lot of people don't like change. But at the same time, where that was really coming from is private providers. Were really having a lot of heartburn over this. They really felt that this that these changes were going to put them out of business. So unfortunately, what happened is Senator Gail Harrell, every time, would take them out of the mix. And of course, you can't do that, you know, and so finally, Representative Groll was able to get her bill passed, which was the far, far superior bill. And so consequently, again, another, another big win, not just for Lee County, but for our state and for our kids. You know, what, what a great thing. I know I've heard others talk, including at the Department of Education, talk often about if we don't get them started out right, right then, you know, we're already behind. So I think that's really an important piece, too. We also had a great, a great deal of action on CTE. You know, everybody's talking about career technical education. We had a lot of bills that actually reflect that. If you look back through some of the workforce development bills, et cetera, that are maybe especially directed at school boards so much, they, but they are directed at workforce, and they are directed at those, those groups.
There were two, at least. One was Senate Bill 366. It was the apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship training. And so that put in some educational requirements for some of the businesses that have apprenticeship in there, and how to get more credits for kids that are in apprenticeship program through their education. So there was movement with that as well.
And there was a great deal of talk at this, at this particular session about cybersecurity and the cybersecurity threats, because we do have some, in fact, our own legislator, Jill Lombardo, Representative Jill Lombardo, from Cape Coral, that, that's his career, and he, he's obviously very knowledgeable about that, and it's so, so good to have somebody who is, because it's certainly a technology that many of us are not that familiar with. So, so when you start looking down the list, Ms. Gettens, I think that, that we're telling you, yes, those things have been on there repeatedly, but at the same time, Ashley just found another thing she wants to bring up.
Teacher, sorry, the teacher's certificates, certifications, I'm sorry, and retention. There was movement on that, too. House Bill 1195. That allows for applicants for certification to satisfy their mastery of general knowledge requirement through their receipt of their master degree or higher from an institution as identified by a quality program. So it gave, gives them more time to get, to learn, get that mastery done. And so that was another bill that passed that kind of addressed the certification issue we have.
And that was the one that I was getting at, because I mean, I've gotten numerous calls just recently of, of teachers that missed by one or two points over and over and over again, and they've done, spending, you know, an exorbitant amount of money just trying to pass one section of a test.
Sure.
And these are people that are highly effective and have been for three, four, or five years. And, you know, they just keep trying. So that, to me, especially in light of our teacher shortage, which I don't see getting much better, that we need to look at, how can we retain the teachers that want to be there? The last lady that called me, she says, you know, I quit. I just, I give up. I've tried, you know, 12, 15 times, and I can't get it by one or two points, and that, it changes every time. So, you know, she has driven to Tallahassee to look at it, and they give her some of the information, but she doesn't know, you know, what to do. So we, I'm glad to hear that, and I hope we keep pushing for that, for that ability to give them one or two points based on their pedagogy.
Agreed.
Thank you, Ms. Gettens. I have Ms. Patrica, and then Ms. Morgan, please.
I just want to say thank you, because I believe the number one item on our list was the accountability piece. And I know that came out of the DOE and not the legislature, but I also know that you had an impact on that. And the other was the virtual meetings of our committee, our committees. I know you guys worked really, really hard on that, and you were able to make it happen, even though it didn't happen in the way I would consider to be in a traditional bill where it would be appropriate. You got it done. I don't care.
But that's, that's the way those all happen, though.
And then I have some comments for the board, and I'm not sure what your involvement would be in this. We have an early session this year, correct?
We're going to bring that up in a few minutes, but please go ahead. Yeah, we were going to talk about that, too, but yes.
Okay, so I'd like to really prioritize the adoption of our legislative platform immediately, so that we can start to work with our legislative, it's already on there, so you're already going to talk to us about that.
We are, yes, absolutely.
But really, just overall, I want you to hear from me that, that I appreciate the work that you put in. I know it was hard. And as part of our future working together, calls to action, I got a lot of those from FSBA this year, which is great for issues that impact us statewide. But if there are any issues that come up that would have a negative impact on us locally, or a positive impact, and you need us to be reaching out to say, hey, please vote for this, or please vote against that, that would be helpful for me as we make our way through session. Those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I'm gonna just push right on through, because I think we do need to be talking about what we're doing going forward, and we don't have a lot of time. And so I want to bring up two things that are budget-related, and we will be discussing the budget next this afternoon. The first is the Innovation School. We have it on our budget at $78 million, which is what our footprint costs, our model costs. The, the Innovation School, as proposed in partnership with FGCU, comes in at 90. I'm wondering what your opinion is about our putting on our I'm wondering what your opinion is about our putting on our agenda, a request for $12 million to span the difference. This would be an initiative that FGCU and the school district would have to pursue together. But again, I think because we were partners, we might have a little bit more leverage than if we were trying to do this on our own. But I, but I'd like to, you know, to sort of get a sense of what you think is possible.
One of the things that, that has really worked well for us, I believe, is because we're local and because we've been, you know, been here, Ashley's been here forever, I've been here for 35 years. We've had an opportunity to have a really close relationship with FGCU and with their lobbying team that they have there. You know, we've known each other a very, very long time. So the workability of that together as a tandem or as a team with each other is very doable. I think that in looking at what our proposal would be, what we would really need to do is come up with a proposal that then make sure that we're mirror, mirroring what they're doing, too, so we're not going in different directions, so to speak. I will tell you that as long as they are agreeable to something like that, I think that having the muscle behind us and behind them makes it very doable.
Thank you. The second question I have is also budget-related with respect to the Eastleigh Tech College. We have it in our budget as 90 million, and I think that we need to think differently about how we're going to pay for this school. I don't think 90 million should come out of our budget. I think what comes out of our budget is the footprint, is the property and the, the walls. I'm trying to think of the framework, whatever. And then there are two other investments. One is the corporate investment in the, in the individual bays or schools within that technical college. And then the third would be an investment by the state. And so I know we can't pull this together for the current session, other than to introduce the idea of partnering with the state business, public-private with the state, and looking more towards '22, '23, '24, '25, bringing it up a couple of times, so they develop a sense of where we're going. I think the question then would be, how, how do we start? What is it that the legislature would be looking for from us? What, so in conversation this year, draft form next year, an absolute ask the following year. I, just, I'm just not asking you to respond to this now, but as we move forward, some pragmatic suggestions about how we should be partnering with the community, what it is they're looking to see as we go forward with this.
And I would tell you that that, that makes perfect sense to me to do that. But I, but what we really need to be able to do in doing an educational piece, if you will, to legislatures, which is what you're talking about, which is very important, I mean, laying the groundwork, the more times they hear this, the more excited they can get about it, is really down to how do we sell that as being something really important? The Eastleigh Tech is so exciting, because this is what we're going to be able to do with this, and this is why you should get behind, you, Mr. and Mrs. Legislators, should get behind this, so that we can really, you know, make this all happen. So the more information we can get in that regard, the better off it is for us. We need a champion. We always need a champion with something like that. And obviously, my, my initial reaction would be, you know, we need to make sure that Representative Roach is, is right there with us.
Okay. So those are my, my comments. Thank you.
I want to go to Ms., I'll come back to you, Ms. Gittens. I want to get the people who haven't spoke yet. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, hi.
Hello. I'm going to ask you for a little bit different, kind of a pulse of what you felt when you talked to our local delegations and how they're really feeling about public education. Let me add a comment to that. As a career educator who goes back to 1969, '70 school year, every single year, especially since I've been here in Florida, I see more and more of an attack on public education. I see, and this really hurts my heart, to hear the comments, and I think some of these things are reflected in the legislation that came out of this session, really an overall lack of trust and respect for our professionals, especially our classroom teachers. There seems to be a concerted effort to undermine, to expand, because I think one of the bills you were talking about, the scholarship, didn't it also expand the eligibility, making it more middle-class, not just because...
Hundred thousand dollar, yeah, threshold.
Yeah, yeah, because originally, that was supposed to be more geared to low income. And so things like that, and comments from the community, and comments, and editorials that I have been reading in New York Times and other outstanding newspapers, they, they get so, there's such a disrespect for teachers, that it's even gotten at the extreme, people demanding cameras in classrooms to monitor teachers and make sure they're not teaching something a parent wouldn't approve of, and saying that, that children and parents don't really have a right to demand privacy in our public schools, because the public schools are paid for by taxpayers. So if you could share some of the responses that you got with your interactions, and obviously, you were very successful with the health education, albeit there's the huge other opt-out, and yeah, it's fine, but don't teach this, don't, it's just very disturbing, the lack of respect for professional educators. What are you seeing? What trends, and especially trends among our local delegation?
Well, our, our local, let me, let me first start out by saying the trends, because we, we read national trends, too. You know, we, we look at all of the national trends when it comes to all of the groups that, that actually the legislators attend these meetings, the ALEC meetings and NCSL meetings. And I, when I was a legislator, I, I've attended those meetings, I know what those meetings are about. Most generally, those meetings will be where you'll get a lot of draft legislation handed out to legislators, and the draft legislation, then either, either they get all excited about it or they don't. And, and a lot of that, you will find, is very conservative. A lot, some of it may be even more, more, more red meat than even you're talking about, because I, I hear you, I, I understand, as a former legislator, legislator, as a former educator, that has to get you right to the heart of something that you feel so passionately about, and that I understand. I can tell you, when I see legislators acting bad, it gets to my heart, too, because that isn't what anybody really wants of that. Unfortunately, what we find is that with the leadership that we have here in our state and have had in the last few years, that we do find that the leaning is in that direction. I do not believe, I honestly do not believe that they really are meaning to be mean to teachers, because most of them, whenever you, whenever you address them directly and talk about it, that a lot of them will come right out and say, well, I didn't mean the teachers. I meant the leadership, or the, the school board, or the, on and on and on. I don't, I didn't mean the, the people who are in the classroom with my kids. I meant other people that are making these decisions. So that's what we hear. Our delegation here in Lee County, and we, and we trip over into Collier County some, too, with the people that we interact with, and even up to Charlotte a little bit, we, we find that this year, we had, we had some newbies, if you will. We had some newly-elected legislators. And Ms. Jordan, I know, went to every meeting with us, and, and we had an opportunity, we felt, to start making friends. I will tell you that we had good interaction with them. I don't believe that they're, and she can tell you more than I can, even with that, because she did most of the presenting when we were there. We felt that we had an opportunity with, with, with Adam Botana, with Representative Botana, with Representative Pierce, Pierce, sorry, Jenna, I just messed your name up, because it's really Malika now, okay? And, and they both were really open. In fact, it was interesting, because they both asked for additional information, which we immediately sent to them, specific to health education, specific to the things that we were really looking at, those types of things that we went in detail. I did follow-up emails with each of them about the things that we talked about, because they seemed interested enough that they were going to really look at it. Now, that's those two locally. I will tell you that Mr. Jill Lombardo has young children. He's very interested, obviously, in education, because he has young children. He, he is, is a very conservative man, and so he has some very strong opinions about that. But at the same time, we did have an opportunity to start sharing and start making, making inroads with him, if you will, to understand us a little bit better, understand what we're faced with a little bit better, understand how many children that we actually are impacting, families that we're impacting. So I think all that was really good. We did have Senator Pasadena, who has been a friend of ours for a very, very long time, very big supporter of health education, very big supporter of mental health. She, too, is, is moving into a leadership role. If everything goes according to plan, she will be the President of the Senate in another year. So we feel that we have a good friend in her. Is she always going to side with us? Probably not. If you look at her voting record, her voting record is probably going to reflect that she supported all of these measures. I didn't see her standing up, not supporting them. She didn't, she didn't have any reason to not. Now, I can tell you also that Senator Rodriguez, who we have known for many years, I've certainly known him for many years, he has strong opinions likewise in regards, and most of those are very conservative opinions. He actually sponsored a couple of the bills that we have here and spoke very eloquently about why he did that. He has a child that has been in our school system, a special needs child who's been in our school system. And so because of that, we have a few extra hurdles to jump with, with that. Fortunately for us, his team that he has is the team that, that Senator Benacusto had. So we have very strong relationship and very strong ties there, too. So consequently, even though our, our relationship is somewhat strained there for many, many reasons from a long time ago, which have absolutely nothing to do with anything we have done.
Or most.
More, most of you have done, either. So from, from a long history. So we've had a lot of making up to do, and, and we've worked towards that, that means of being able to do that with him, hopefully making some positive insight. That kind of gives you, I think, I, I don't think I missed anybody on that. Mr. Roach, perfect example, too. He's, he's the first guy, actually, that we talked to who said, health education, there's no way anybody can be against this. And so he, he was very supportive. And in fact, this year, whenever I called him and said, guess what? We found the bill. Here it is. It's, you know, Representative Yarborough's bill. Please get with him. And, and he was very receptive to doing, I mean, he called me on a Saturday afternoon, you know, and returned my call, and, you know. So I think that because of all those things. But in general, Ms. Vaughn, I will tell you that I hear you. I see what's going on nationwide, too. We don't lose sight of what's happening in our state, but we certainly don't lose sight of what's happening at ALEC and in, in NCSL and some of the legislation, draft legislation you're putting out. The bills that did not pass this year, that, that we see come back every year, and back to Ms. Gittens, you know, every year, a lot of these bills will be repeats, retreads of bills. So consequently, those are things we have to still stay on top of. I'm not sure I got to exactly what you wanted, but that was my rundown on what I think you were asking.
Yeah, and, and I really appreciate that at least we got the health education, albeit we have the, yeah, we'll teach health, except not a really important part for our teens. And moving forward, everything on, of course, everything on budget and some of the other things are reflective of how the lawmakers feel about public education. But I think that needs to be, we're, I don't think we're doing a good job as public educators at selling ourselves and showing ourselves as institutions that take everyone. We don't, you know, no matter what your handicap, no matter what your, any, any, any of those things, we take everyone. And I really think that that needs to be a priority for all of us here on, on the board, and from my opinion, for you guys as well, to really sell the unique job we do as public educators and have always done, even when we have to jump through hoops and over some of these hurdles that have really hurt us with the, especially with the for-profit charters, some of which go in and out of business like that. I'm not talking about ones like some of the city, the municipal ones.
Sure.
The for-profits. So appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
But I just hope that moving forward, as all of us, as professional educators, by virtue of being here on the board, that we do a much better job of selling the unique things that we do as public educators and our teachers for now, a lot of disrespect from community members. So that's off my soapbox.
No, I, no, and I, I know that I, I, we've known each other long enough for me to understand where you're coming from, I believe, on, on, on that regard. I would tell you that, that I think that we all owe it to this institution, to Lee County, to our families, to be able to bring those things, we all owe it to those kids to bring those things forward. You know, the, the respect for teachers, I couldn't agree with you more about that. I, I feel it in my heart and soul, you know? I come from a, my father-in-law was a superintendent of schools, my mother-in-law was a teacher, Ashley's mother's a teacher, we...
My in-laws were both teachers.
Both teachers.
All four of my kids are in public school.
You're, you're speaking to people here who have nothing...
I went to school in Lee County. I graduated from Cape Coral High School.
Nothing but respect for them, and, and would be hard-pressed to have anybody try and debate that with either one of us, and I'm sure with any of you. I would also say that this has been a year that...
Like no other.
Like no other, that we have so much to be proud of with what happened this year.
Could have been so much worse.
We talk about that all the time, how the pivot, the, you know, the pivot that happened here, the fact that, you know, all of those things, it's a great story that, and it's not a story, it's factual, it's, you know, it's not fiction, that we have to share about that's what your teachers did. Because, you know, as much as the decisions could be made with leadership are here, your teachers were the people there. And so I think that those are things that we continue to share as we, you know, set meetings and we go and talk to folks. And, you know, people really want to hear about that. We, recently, I was at a, another meeting, happened to be Dr. Atkins speaking at that meeting, and he's been speaking at some meetings prior to his retirement. And, and the stories that he's been able to share to some of our community leaders, I believe, have been very impactful, because people didn't understand or realize, unless they're like Ashley, who has four children in school, you know?
Yeah, I had the chief of staff for the Commissioner of Education, his chief of staff, Alex Kelly, is a very good friend of mine, and we've had conversations about what is going on in the classroom, because he knows my four kids are in elementary and middle school, so at least he's hearing that part of it. And now he's in the governor's office as one of his chiefs of staff. But, you know, they do want to know what's happening, like you said.
Agreed.
I mean, they, they want to know, especially someone that's not in the classroom or doesn't have children, what is happening, especially during COVID? What is going on with the teaching? Are your kids learning? Are they retaining? How are they doing mentally? Because that wasn't, that's another big deal, is the mental health aspect of our children and what they went through this past year, whether they were at home or in the classroom with masks on and not interacting with their friends, and not eating with their friends, and things of that nature. So, I mean, I know I've been asked, from a personal level, from people that work on these issues in Tallahassee.
Well, and I think you're right, because we have to be the ones who are telling that story.
Right.
And carrying that narrative. Ms. Fisher, I think that you had a question?
Sure, of course, yes. So for the past several years, it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
And watch you advocate and be available to us. And as an advocate for a com- with you and watch you advocate and be available to us and as an advocate for comprehensive health education and mental health. Once you guys came on the scene, you took the ball and ran with it, and we have incrementally made steps forward. And this is all to the benefit of our kids.
Absolutely.
It's necessary. Our numbers are still not great when it comes to sexually transmitted diseases and teenage pregnancies, et cetera, but we have made progress. And, and Rome wasn't built in a day. So I, I really have to thank you so much on a personal note for your continued hard work on that and, and reporting to us all of what happened, and especially this year, for you to accomplish what you have and to keep our local delegation on board with some of those issues that were important to us. I thank you again.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
You were the driving force, Ms. Fisher. I have to tell you, I've known you for a long time, too. I know, I know you. And you were really pushing hard for that, but it, it was the right thing to do. And, and now I believe that, that we have this first step, we have an opportunity to grow it. People realize it, it wasn't the, it wasn't the bad thing to do.
No. And, and, and I thank my colleagues for their continued support, too.
Thank you.
That's, that's been invaluable. Thank you.
Ms. Javonelli?
Yes.
Any comments, questions?
Thank you. I, I know legislators, I've spoken to them, and basically, I think what Tallahassee is really wanting, they're just wanting us, the accountability piece of it. That's, and it's, and they're not out for just teach, you know, against teachers or, I mean, because I think we've got a governor that thought about teachers, he just didn't think about all staff. And I think that's what we're doing wrong, is not advocating for all. And I think that's really important, that, you know, we have to do a better job in advocating for, you know, all, all employees that run a school district, you know, and because, I mean, the classroom's really, really where the important stuff is done, but, you know, it, it all trickles down, right? You know, really, so.
Got to have the bus driver to get them there.
That's right. And so I think that's, for, for when I step back and look at everything, that's what I think we're not doing is, you know, doing the accountability piece and making sure that we're transparent about it. And so people know what we're doing and doing our best that we can do with what we have. Instead of complaining about it, just keep working, you know. And so I think that's really important. One of my questions I had is, I, I heard so much about the Bright Futures, and I'm, I'm really worried that it's coming back. But when I spoke to legislators about it, their, their thought was, we need to, we, we need to look at this and change, and it needs to change. But, you know, the changes that we're making were terrible, and I don't think they really were thinking everything through. So I, I'm expecting it to come back, I guess. I'm just hoping that we advocate accordingly so that we, so that the parents are happy and the students are happy and where it's a positive, you know, positive advocating for it, you know.
I appreciate that. I, Senator Baxley and, and I have known each other a very long time. He and I served together, actually, in the legislature, so I, I've, I've known him for many, many years. And I, I, I have to tell you, I think that knowing him and knowing his personality, I know that we'll be back. Okay, I, there, there's no guessing there. I don't need a crystal ball to tell me that. I know it will be back. I'm hoping that when it comes back, he's put more thought into it. I, and, and I know that he was beaten up pretty badly. He was bruised and battered and bloody-nosed through all of that. And, and because of that, I think it's made everybody a little hesitant to jump in with both feet. And, and what you say, I believe, is probably very true, and that is that any program that's been in place for as long as Bright Futures has been in place, there's been a lot of changes that have happened. And yes, we probably do need to look at it seriously. But looking at it seriously, in my, my opinion, is not having someone just throw out draft language and let it go. And unfortunately, I think that's what happened, and I think that he was shocked at how much pushback, I think he knew there was going to be pushback. I think he was shocked at how much pushback there was and how it, it got really personal, which is unfortunate. I, I don't think anybody here wants anything to get that personal when it comes to our public servants. We should be able to debate policy without it being that personal, and it got very personal towards him. So that was unfortunate to see that happen. But will it be back? Yes. But hopefully with more thought.
And it, it wasn't picked up in the House. It only passed, there was no, there was no language in the House, and that bill only passed the Senate. It was 22 to 18. And there were Republicans that voted against that bill. So I, I think Carol hit the nail on the head. I really think they threw out draft language and were, not wisely, we're not expecting the backlash that they have. But anytime you give a family with a child that's going to college a certain amount of money and then try to pull that back, it's scary. And it's very unfair because they've earned that scholarship and that family budgets buy that scholarship. So I don't know why that all wasn't thought through. I don't understand the thought process of that. But if it comes back, and I think that it will, it just, it'll look differently. I, I hope that it is well thought out. But that is one of the issues that we need to constantly hammer our local delegation about over the summer and into the fall when we start going back, is that Bright Futures cannot end up where it was at in the Senate.
And Senator Pasadomo knows that, and she's the rules chair.
Right. Well, and, I mean, parents for four years, students' high school, you know, career, they've planned accordingly.
Oh, yeah.
Strategically picked classes and did-
College is expensive.
To maneuver to get to, you know, for their next step, for their child's next step. So, I mean, it was a big deal. So you had parents that were outraged.
Oh, yeah.
Understandably so.
But I, I can tell you, knowing, knowing Senator Baxley, who has like nine children, I mean, this, this is a man who has a bunch of kids. But Senator Baxley is known for trying to create what he calls dialogue, I call controversy. He calls dialogue. And, and some of that, I think, but it really, it, it, he got, yeah, he got, yeah, he got slapped around.
So I would recommend that maybe this could be on our agenda. I know this is something to talk about, but, you know, and what your, your thought, your expertise would be, would y'all recommend, recommend it being on our, and it could be on FSBA's, I don't even know.
Absolutely. A hundred percent. Yeah, I, we both, we both believe that it should be one of our bullet points.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're coming up to the hour, and so I, I'm going to have Ms. Gittens. I know, it was a quick hour, wasn't it? So we have Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Patrica for the last questions, please.
Okay, a couple of, three quick things. One, on the House Bill 545, you mentioned about the board would be reviewing, reviewing materials on health instruction and all that. And I would like to say that perhaps we put it on our agenda to look at, what does that look like? Because if we have to, to do that, what kind of a rubric or template do we have? Are they providing, what are we looking for?
Yeah.
That type of thing. So I don't know if they have that specifically, if we could get that information or you could share it with-
We talked to your attorney about that last week, too.
Okay.
Not about a rubric, but about that particular piece of legislation.
Right. And just something, I mean, if we're, if it's something we're supposed to be doing, we need to know what we're looking for. On the innovation school that Ms. Morgan mentioned, I believe that Dr. Savage had mentioned previously about a plan to, to help that partnership along, and maybe he will want to mention that later on. And then you mentioned the, you know, visits with our chair. And I'm wondering, could Ms. Jordan give us an update on, you know, those visits and what types of things were discussed?
Well, yes. And that was in the very beginning of the session, and I did come back. So anytime I've ever gone out, I've always come back and I've shared that information. And that was, that was our, we did like a drive-by, if you will, and maybe not the drive-by is not the correct word. We did a-
Yeah, because they all gave us quite, quite a bit of time, actually, especially you, you're, you know, when you go to Tallahassee, it's a drive-by.
Right.
When we got to their offices, we actually got to, you know, drink our soda. Yeah.
Correct, we did. We were given candy or whatever we wanted. But, so, anytime that I have gone to any of those, I had come back and I had shared. And I know that Representative Botana, he also was going to go to do a walkthrough, because he does not have children. He has dogs, he has no children. And so I know he went to Bonita, and Ms. Morgan was over there. He had asked Ms., reached out to Ms. Morgan and asked Ms. Morgan to, to take him for the tour. She could not do, she was at a meeting that day, and Ms. Stillwell met him and took him on the tour of the school. And I think he actually knows someone at the school, was one of his friends as, as well. But he said anybody, he's wel, he welcomes anybody to come and visit him. He's not in his office, he's at the boat, at his boat dealership. You can go there anytime, stop by, see him. He'll be more than happy to speak to anybody. All of them, you know, said their doors are open for anybody who wants to stop by and speak to them. And, and I frequently do talk to most of them, you know, because when I see him or if I'm thinking of something, I pick up the phone, I call him. So we all have that duty. As Carol had spoke about before, it's all of us. We all need to, you know, be working this together. Did you have another question, Ms. Gittens?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Ms. Patrica, you would be the-
So I thought Bright Futures was something they dealt with in off-election years. So I'm surprised to hear that you anticipate it coming up again this year.
He, he is termed out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it doesn't-
That will, that will change things because he is termed out.
Okay. That's, that was my answer. Thank you.
Yep.
So then Carol or Stacy, is there something else that you want?
We, we, I know, I, I know you're on the clock. I got it. Very quickly, just so everyone understands, committee week starts September 20th. September 20th. We're, so we're looking, we're, I, I haven't really looked, but I think we're about 90 days out, somewhere, yeah, somewhere close to, or 89, you know, days out. The delegation meeting was just announced. The delegation meeting is going to be August 18th at its, at the venue where we always are at there at, I started to say Edison Community College, at-
FSW.
FSW, thank you. And the deadline for getting on the agenda is August 6th. That being said, it would be really helpful to have, be really helpful to have a platform at least drafted, at least moving in that general direction, to have a platform as far as some of those things. So we need to really start thinking about that like yesterday, as far as, you know, anything that we need to put on the platform and who, and who would like to go and present and all of those types of things, which we don't need to know right this minute. But by 5 o'clock on August 6th, we have to know. I mean, I will, I will certainly make sure that our delegation chair, Representative Roach, knows of our interest, make sure that they know that, that they save a spot for us, et cetera. But paperwork-wise, all of those types of things, even if it's draft, they need by August 6th.
Ms. Patrica?
So can I suggest that we reach consensus to meet as soon as humanly possible regarding legislative platform? I know we have the month of July mostly off, but if it means meeting in July, either on this issue, we, we could perhaps prioritize this issue and push something off, something else off into July that's less time-sensitive. I'd like to reach consensus on that, if we may.
Well, I think this is something we definitely have to do, so we're going to have to find room for it somewhere. And do we have a consensus in finding room for this agenda? Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
I need to know the schedule. I will be away for part of that. So, yes, if we can work it around our schedules.
Beautiful. Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Javonelli?
Yes, I've also taken vacation time.
You already took a vacation.
No, just kidding. But I'll, you know, of course, the will of the board.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So we will definitely work on this and get that information to you. And with that, is there anything else? And I just want to say, seriously, thank you so much. Thanks. You always, always send this information out. The updates are fabulous because I can take those updates with the FSBA updates and look at them, you know, put them all together. And it's just so appreciative. And I know it's so much work, and I so appreciate you, both of you. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
We appreciate you.
Yes.
If I may, I just hate to interrupt. I just, I'm looking at our, ahead in our agenda, we have our board agenda item review. The, the questions that we received were actually specifically related to this item. So while that is, certainly staff have the ability to answer and do their best to answer to this item, we have the benefit of having these folks here today. If, if you would find it permissible to, for me to let those questions be known, so that if they would want to add any value beyond what staff could do, then that would give you some found time later in the agenda. I know you're trying to keep us on schedule, but it's just those questions just happen to pertain to capital strategies and that item, if you would find it permissible.
Okay, if we have questions, then we can, Ms., Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I had one of the questions, and it's been answered through the presentation and something that I think Lauren sent, or Ms. Stillwell sent us earlier. So my questions have been answered.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Javonelli had-
Okay, well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you. Somebody else. Okay, sorry.
And actually, mine was just regarding, I, I believe this is an annual contract. This is really for the superintendent. And, and I couldn't recall if we had went out for, initially, if this was an RFP, we did this three years ago, or, and that's, that's really my concern. And I just, because I just want to make sure that we had opportunity for all.
Absolutely. And we have the ability to have staff answer that later, if you'd like. Those are, that, that part of the question is certainly a staff piece, but Dr. Desmore is available now, if you'd like to have that answer while our capital strategies folks are here.
Doesn't matter, me, whatever.
Chair, it's your discretion.
I would prefer that we do that afterwards.
Okay.
If that's okay. And Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Capital Strategies for all of their assistance when we, you know, move forward with the advisory committee and everything else as we've analyzed these bills. I really have enjoyed working with them. Based on the bills that we have, there is going to be some policy that will be coming forward to the board. Try to work on those as quickly as possible. Ms. Gittens, I think you had a question on House Bill 545? Is that the one you were asking about?
Yes.
So that's going to have us revise Board Policy 2.18 to include certain language with regards to the public access and the board approving those instructional materials. And there's, I would say about four to five either new policies or revisions to policies that you'll be seeing. In addition, I've had an opportunity to speak to them about giving me a summary from 2018 and 2019. And I'm in the process of reviewing that to make sure that we are up to date, at least from 2018, 2019. I feel comfortable with 2020, and we will definitely be up to date for 2021. So that is one of the projects that I have, is to make sure that we're completely caught up with our policies now that I have this great cheat sheet that they provided. So I really appreciate that. And that's, that's what I'm, sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then next will be Dr. Desmore and Ms. Kelly Letcher.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Savage, members of the board, good to be here this afternoon and talk with you on all things budget. So this should be the most exciting part of the day. We have lots of information to go over related to preliminary budget and also capital. I know that we only have 40 minutes for the day, so in case we don't finish our discussion, because there is really a lot of material to go through, then we also have some time reserved in tomorrow's briefing to continue the discussion as well. So it's as far as we get. So that being said, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Letcher, who will share some information, information related to the preliminary budget.
Good afternoon. So some of this stuff we've already discussed, I would just wanted to kind of go over it again so that everybody was aware what's in the budget. Of course, as you know, the BSA has gone up $53.42 from the FY '21. We're now at $4,372.91. Our one, unweighted FTE, we've discussed, has gone up $2,632. And remember, that's a number that we're not sure we're going to hit, but DOE felt comfortable that we would. So we're hoping that we do, and we're holding back some FTE just in case we have to give any money back so we don't have to go back out to the classroom. The teacher salary increase, they have it, again, the 47.5, they gave us an additional allocation. I'm not sure how we're supposed to be handling that at this time, so we're waiting for some direction from the Department of Education. I did contact them, and they said they were probably going to be expecting a plan again next year, which makes me think that we're going to have to do something before we get the allocation. So we're just waiting to hear from DOE on that one. So we're just waiting to hear from DOE on that one. We do expect some growth in our family empowerment scholarships. We saw a large growth in the current year, and with all of the changes that they're making next year, we are expecting it to be an impact on the budget. I'm not going to go into the details because I think Ashley and Carol covered that very well. There, we have an increase in the contribution for our health insurance of $744 per employee. We went from $7,360.80 to $8,104.80, and that's about a $7 million increase to the budget. There's an, gonna be an increase in the retirement rate. It's going from 10% to 10.82%. I was expecting before around 11%, so 10.82 was a nice surprise to me. And that's about $5.3 million based on current employees. So for the general fund, our estimate for the general fund is $982,664.748. That's a $19 million increase over the current year. That includes the growth in the FTE that DOE was expecting us to have, and retirement and health insurance increases are in that number. The fund balance right now, we're expecting to go up about $17 million. We do believe that number is artificially high for this year. As you know, we had been bringing that down, trying to get that number down some. But with all of the vacancies that occurred this year during COVID, we had unfilled positions and things that were going on, and not being able to get subs in the classroom, left some money out there. We are working on a plan to be able to bring that fund balance down, but not with reoccurring expenses that we're going to have to carry on with. So we're gonna look into some different options that we, we'll bring them back to you. The focus this year, of course, is the classroom. We are focusing again on our English learners. We're focusing on the low-performing students, and we're trying to recapture learning loss during that COVID timeframe. The budget is constantly changing right now. Number, none of the numbers are set in stone. So when I come back to the tentative budget with you all in July, it's probably gonna look very different than it does right now. Our debt is estimated anywhere between 86 to 102 million. And later on, we'll talk some more, and when we get to the capital piece, about why that number in debt is so different. Depending on the options that you choose and the way we choose to handle our debt, it could be anywhere from 86 to about 102 million. We'll, we'll be discussing that later on, so. Our capital is currently estimated about $701,952,430 million. It includes an estimated $181.9 in COPS. The capital millage is at about 148 million. That number is adjusted up with the property appraisers' updated estimate, just so you know that. Our sales tax, we're estimating this year to be about $87.2 million, and impact fees at about $17.3 million. That, we're, the current collection rate is at 52.5%. And that, as you remember, we had the impact fees, the county commission approved a 2.5% increase as the years go, every year that we move forward. And again, more detail in capital will be coming forward after this. So our food service, we're looking at about $63.2 million. That is a decrease of about $9.2 million over the current year. There was a lot of feeding going on through the summer for, and, and through the school year for our food service. We fed every student, even if they were home, you know, the home connector, however they were being instructed, they were being fed. But our focus continues to be on making sure that all of our students have nutritious meals, and the CEP will continue for all schools into next year. Our internal service fund is estimated at about $155.5 million. That's a $10 million increase. Of course, we have the health insurance contribution increase of about $7 million, and the fund balance, we have estimated currently to go up a little bit, and we'll continue to watch that, and that will change as final numbers come in. Our tax roll is currently at $96.5 billion. The conference reporters, or first calculation came out about $100.8 billion. And the new, the property appraisers' preliminary report that we just received takes that up to about $103 billion. That is a 6.68% increase over the current year, which is a nice set of money. And as you know, the required local effort, even though that's going up, we'll see probably no additional money from the required local effort piece, because as the tax piece goes up, the state piece goes down. Where we will see our increase is our discretionary millage. We're expecting about $73 million more in our discretionary, or about $73 million from discretionary. And in the capital, that's 148 million. So in the discretionary, that'd be about $1.6 million more than what's in the budget right now. And in capital, that's $3 million more. And we'll find that out when the second calculation comes out in July. There's no questions on that part of the budget. I'll move into a quick summary of ESER.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I did have a question. You showed that this year, our focus is on resources to the classroom, and the three areas, ELL, low-performing students, and recaptured learning losses, all focus on low-achieving students. I've asked about this before, and I'm going to ask again. Why are we not providing specifics to our gifted students and our students that are enrolled in advanced classes? And I want to add to that, we have, as a district now, we have expanded, and I know, I think that all the high schools, or some of the high schools, have now for English III or IV, depending on the school, English III or IV honors, put in an ACE, Cambridge ACE class. I think our middle school eighth graders are expanding. So we have, and I have my own opinion on ACE versus AP versus, but that's for another time. We have expanded so many of these programs for our higher-achieving students, including AP. We're pulling in some of our native Spanish speakers to take the AP World Language Spanish exam. Now, all of those generate, I know they generate some money to the teachers, but they also generate money to the schools. And I was asked this question, actually about a year ago, from a former colleague of mine at Estero High School, who has been teaching Cambridge classes for years. And she says, said, "Betsy, where does this money go? We haven't seen it." So my question is, we are generating more money, correct, by expanding these opportunities? And I'll be honest, picking courses where we can get kids to pass, and it's...
And that money does go back...
And where is that money going? And do we have a line item in our budget, and how much is it? Because, yes, we absolutely need to bring everybody up, but it's not fair to our high-achieving students that they're not getting the payback.
So you are correct. We do generate additional dollars for that. And the teachers receive bonuses based on the students that pass. So we do give that money back to the schools. It's a, what we do is that the FTE that they generate, the bonus amounts are reduced from that. The tests, the cost of the tests are reduced from that. And then the remainder of the funding goes back to the school...
Right.
...to use in those programs. Now, how the principals choose to use that money is at the discretion of the principal. So the money is allocated back into the schools, and I can provide you a spreadsheet of every program and how much money is given back to the schools and how much it's earned. So the money does go back to the schools, and then they allocate the dollars for the programs.
Okay, and I've actually heard that, now that you said that, in, in the past. But would that spreadsheet also include how the schools used it? And let me ask you this, if it was generated by our high-achieving students passing these very difficult exams, when we give the money back to the school, why don't we just say, "Oh, you can use it however"? Is there not, maybe this is also a question for Dr. Savage, is there not a stipulation that because the money came out of these advanced programs, they need to go back and enhance the advanced programs?
Yes, there is. There are those, there's, there are those stipulations that the money is to be used in the programs. The money is put in projects that, they do see it separately so they can account for it and use it for those programs the way that they need to be done. So we do, it is supposed to be used back into the programs that earn the dollars.
Do we follow up on that, or do we just trust? And I'm not trying to diss any of the principals, but do we follow up? And if we don't, shame on us. And also, shame on us if we don't say, "This was earned in these advanced programs. We need to reinvest because we need to invest in all of our students" and, and not give the short end of the stick to those who are working so hard.
Yes, so I can tell you that if we are questioned on the usage of the dollars, we explain to them how they can be used. But we do make an assumption that the principals are using the money appropriately and in the classrooms the way they should. They do buy additional staff with some of them to help with the programs as well. So I, you know, we do have an accounting of that, you know, where the dollars are and how they're being spent, but we don't review it. We do...
I, I'm gonna add one more thing on, on the dollars, and then I'm gonna ask Dr. Savage to weigh in. I talked with Dr. Spiro about this at least a year, probably more, more than a year ago, when I was on the liaison to curriculum, and he and I, actually, I talked mostly. And he said, "There's not enough money for," that the priority went to the lower. And he said, "There's not enough money to train," and I think that's gotten better, "to train all of our," because we cannot have teachers at any grade level teaching these higher-level classes without proper training. I mean, it's just, it's unfair to the kids. It's very unfair to the teachers. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Savage to weigh in, please, on money that's generated and where it should be in the budget, because I feel like it should be channeled back into the advanced programs and gifted program.
Well, I would just comment that I would love to have the opportunity to provide some detailed information about a school-by-school breakdown, showing what funds have been received and how that's been expended. Ms. Letcher kind of volunteered to share that, that piece, and also to give an ample opportunity for academic services to provide some bulleted talking points around that particular area. It's been an area of considerable focus. And so I'd hate to just speculate on beyond the work that they've already been doing to, to that effect. Just probably from my own perspective, this is an area of considerable attention for, for me. It's a family pride. A lot of my, my family members are, have taught some of those advanced courses. I think as an opportunity in our district, we always really try to prioritize lifting up every member of our community. I think it's just also very essential that we take, for students who are already coming to school and are, are far ahead, that we continue to allow them to achieve the highest possible scores on the, on the most rigorous tests available. I think it's a shared perspective of a lot of our school leaders. And so I just would love the chance to kind of highlight some of those successes, as well as any opportunities we have to enhance that work. So with, with, just knowing we have a lot more to cover as well, would that be amenable for, for you?
Yeah, yeah. And what I'd like to ask for is, if you would share with me and the board, how much we are generating through those tests? And am I correct in saying that we're generating a lot more money as we've added more tests?
So, so the first couple of years that you add, like in the ACE program, there's, you won't see much of the additional funding. So we put out a lot of money upfront for the test and the things to go on, and the schools do. It isn't until a student takes a test and passed it is the money generated. So like, say, they started these programs this year. This year, all of the money was upfront cost to the district. And then next year, the, the students will take the test about this timeframe. And hopefully, next year, we'll see some benefit from the additional tests that were taken.
Yeah, and I would like to see that, and I would like to see, if available, reports from the schools on exactly how they utilized that money. And because I would like to see, as we look at new budgets, in addition to focusing on the ones that you did, focus on those that are our very best and brightest in terms of academics. So thank you.
Yes, and, thank you. And I just wanted to make a point that the point, the bullet points that you saw in the previous slide were in no way supposed to be an inclusive list, right? So when we listed some of the, you know, academic priorities, it certainly wasn't meant to be an exhaustive list of what is in the budget. It's just an idea of some of the tops, top things that came out based on the data. And I'm sure that as we move along during this summer in the school year, our friends in academic services will be sharing a lot of information that Dr. Savage just talked about. But I just wanted to make sure to point out that that was not supposed to be the end-all-be-all list of what academic priorities were in the budget.
Yeah, and, and I do realize that, but let's be honest, when something appears in print in black and white in the budget, it gives it, it gives me more confidence that it's being dealt with. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Right, okay.
And if we could, just going forward, if we can be really considerate about trying to keep everything to maybe a five-minute for each comment, so that way we can move on and have everybody speak because of time. And I know, Ms. Patrica?
It's super quick. The 2,632, that's new students we expect next year. Of that number, have, did the state consider redshirt kindergarteners? And are we considering that number? It's, it's my understanding that a lot of parents chose to keep their littles home rather than send them to school during COVID. So what are we anticipating for redshirt kindergarteners? That can be in a board update, please, and thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else has comments regarding this particular segment? Ms. Kelly?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next thing I want to talk about is ESER. We have a lot going on in ESER right now and a lot of unanswered questions. I'll do my best to tell you as much as we know right now. So what this, the first thing here is displaying is an ESER timeline. This is when the funds, we believe, will be available through. And the reason I say the word "believe" is because we have been caught on some of these CARES Act dollars, even though the state has said they would be available for a certain amount of time, they'll come back and take the money before we've had an opportunity to complete the spending, before our charter schools have had, had an opportunity to complete their spending, or even just we've spent it and trying to get the reimbursement has not occurred. So with that in mind, we are trying our best to, you know, utilize the dollars. We're trying to make sure that while we utilize them, we don't leave ourselves high and dry later, because I believe that it will take us a couple of years to regain that learning loss that students have. So we want to make sure that we keep the time, you know, the coverage of those, the higher things that we're offering students for as often as we can. The first, the, the top one is the ESER $3 that we're expecting to get. The total is about $128 billion, and that's statewide, I believe. I'm looking at this here. We do believe we'll have those dollars through fiscal year '24 completely, and then be able to do our final spend-out in fiscal year '25. The ESER $2, we believe we will have through the end of '23 with a little bit of overlap into '24. into '24. And our current ESER $1, we should have through the end of next year as well. So we're hoping to have programs that will continue on to help support the students throughout the programs. Just a kind of a recap on where we are with our current CARES Act, which is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. That was awarded to us. We had $22.8 million. It was awarded, and it should go through September of '22. That is the one, if you all recall, the, they have been, DOE has constantly been looking for the spend down of this, even though it was for two years and we had put in the budget for two years to continue services to schools. Because we have been told they won't give us ESER $2 until we spend out ESER 1, which we're still trying to get clarification if that is true or not. What we've done is we have put some additional items, we've done amendments into ESER 1, and then moved those items for the continuation into the other ESER grants to try and make sure that we can utilize the dollars and still receive the new dollars when we expect to get them as well. We use this, we'll go just a couple of initiatives that we had in place here was our expanded learning opportunities. So we had our summer programming that we did. We had after-school tutoring. We did an additional 30 minutes in some of our high schools for Connect with Lee and Back on Track, and did some additional, you know, a lot of tutoring with these dollars as well to try and do it. We offered some safe reopening of our schools, so we had the PPE that we had in place, the one-to-one computers and things like that. Social and emotional learning supports. We contracted with mental health professionals, and we had some small group services that were provided for students. We had additional supports for our ELL-ESC and the LOWEST25 students in here. We are looking at the SR2 CARES, SR2 portion, that we're expecting to get about $84 million through. Again, it was distributed to school districts based on their Title I, but you do not have the rules of Title I. So, you know, we had that same allocation method from the first one. We expect about $9.8 million of that to go to charter schools. The proposed spending requirements that we have, and again, this is what we've been hearing, we've not gotten any official notifications from the Florida Department of Education on the requirements of this, these dollars. But about 3.3% or 4% for non-enrolled assistance, 16.8% or 20% on academic assistance, and 4.2 million or 5% on technology assistance. So we have been working with all of the divisions. We have all been meeting once or twice a week, trying to figure out the best way to help our students with the learning loss and to provide the needed resources. In your attachments, there was some initiatives, I won't go over all of them, but some of the initiatives that we had, the group had come up with and discussed trying to do for students and for staff, there are some things in there for staff as well. SR3, we're looking at about $174 million. It was, again, distributed on the same basis on Title I. This one requires that we have consultation with our stakeholders, and we just, and they, stakeholders are, you know, staff, teachers, things like that. So that is a part of SR3 that we'll work with. There is a 20% requirement for learning loss initiatives, and we are going to continue the supports that we had with SR1 and SR2 initiatives with this as well. Again, we're still waiting on more information to come forward on these. Any questions on SR?
Questions on this? Ms. Morgan, and then Ms. Gittens.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the SR2 and 3 initiatives under discussion and the additional personnel. Math and science coaches, mental health professionals, school counselors, social workers, additional ESOL resource teachers. Where are we going to get these people? We can't even get them for our current staffing. And normally, I would say, I'm not for adding staff when you've got non-recurring funding. If you could even find these people and then find a way to absorb them back into the system once the funding goes away. I just, I'd like to understand a little bit more about that aspect of it. The others make complete sense to me. Not that this doesn't make sense, but I really want to understand from an operational administrative point of view, how this, you see this happening.
So we have had those discussions because of the, one of the hardest things is pulling the teachers out of the classroom. And so we've talked about getting some outside contracted services in some of these areas to help. And so staff is looking into the opportunities that that can give to us. We are really looking at this, and the most important thing is to have a teacher in the classroom. So if all else fails, they go back to the classroom, because that is the number one place for students, for teachers.
But your point is taken. I mean, it is a significant challenge. It, you know, it really is. And so, and we know that we have those same concerns, that we may not be able to find all of the people that we need for the positions that we're, you know, that we're able to fund at this point. But we're going to work in tandem with academic services and HR to do the best that we can to get as many as we can. And I, we agree with you from a financial standpoint, that typically you have this one-time funding source that is going to be around for two years, in some cases, three, based on that timeline. And so typically, it would not be ideal to try to invest in people or recurring sources. But as you can see by the numbers, I mean, $174 million, $86 million, there is no way in such a people-intensive business as ours. With the parameters that they're putting around it, in terms of how you have to focus it, we wouldn't be successful in spending this money if we did not invest in people, even for the short period of time that we can do. So that's why you see some of what you see on that list.
So essentially, you're looking at contracts, because contracts roll off. So that for some of your professional staff, you're really talking about contracted employee, contracted specialists as opposed to direct hires.
In some cases, yes, but not in all cases. In some cases, it would be direct hires. That then when we did that, we would make sure that they knew that this is based on the grant that we have, and that grant has this time period, right? But then we also know that based on our numbers each year, in terms of numbers of people that retire, that leave, that we'll have the opportunity within those three years to retain some of those people in the positions that come open.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay. Non-recurring funding makes me very ill, makes my stomach hurt and my head hurt too, because I look at a situation that suddenly they have given us this awesome amount of money to help, especially to bridge the achievement gap. And if it's only for three years, it's like saying, okay, in three years, we're going to catch all this up. And we all know that that's absolutely not going to happen. So I guess, two things. One, what is our Plan B? If, and we're looking at the achievement gap of students that has widened because of COVID, we get the money, let's say it narrows somewhat and takes us back to where we were. So do we have a Plan B, let's say? And, you know, Ms. Lecter, you mentioned at one point, sometimes they just, they give it and they take it away. So do we have a Plan B for those students if we're still in the flux of trying to close that gap? And then I have one more thing to say on it. Go ahead.
So we've had discussions about that as well. And so while we're going through this process, we're going to be looking at the data. We're going to see what is working and what isn't working. And if something is working really well, then we're going to try and figure out what do we, what can we give up to do what's working? And so we're going to be looking at those as we're going through this and seeing what we need to shift to make it happen, so that we're providing the best for our students.
Okay. And for my colleagues, I would like to maybe put on our list for our legislative asks that if we do see that this ESER funding is truly helping to close this gap, you know, is there anything that prohibits us from asking to have that funded and showing the data? Look, we had this, we were able to do this in this time period, so why can't we ask for that to be funded for even an extended three years or something, if it's closing the gap? So I would like to have that on the agenda for our legislative piece. The other thing, and you mentioned charter schools, as charter schools are opening, and example is Athenia. What is the data? How many students did we lose? And of what, you know, levels did we lose? Because that affects everything, from finance to academics and all that as well. So I really would like to see that data.
10%. I, we did have charter schools like Athenia that grew during COVID, but we also had charter schools that lost. So it's hard to track where they, you know, did they go from a traditional school setting, or did they shift from another charter school? Did they come from outside? We haven't looked at that data, but we can look at that data and see, you know, what students they picked up during this time period. I don't know, we have not looked at that as we move forward.
Well, we should have it, because for the charter schools, don't they have to say from whence they came to go into that charter school? If they're coming from traditional to charter school?
Yes.
That's the kind of thing that I've been asking for. I really would like to see that, because that does affect a lot of things.
Okay, we can pull it, we just have not looked at that during this timeframe.
Okay, so I would really like to get that at your earliest convenience, if you could.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, what exactly is it that, or Ms. Kelly, do you understand what she's asking for? So that way there's a clear...
I'm asking for the data of student enrollment for charter schools and, you know, leaving traditional, going to charter, and vice versa, and those numbers, basically.
So that would be student assignment that would...
Well, and I know that there is a report too, that if it's a charter school, that our grants department has to keep that information. So they have to know that. So they should have that as a part of their criteria for grants and for charters.
Yes, we can tell by the student's enrollment code if they came from another traditional school, or if they came, if they come from a traditional school, another charter school, from a private or from outside the county. We can pull that. You're talking about just the current year, the FY '21?
The current year, the, yeah, it should be fine. I know that a lot of students have moved to charter schools recently, within the year, and I just would like to see how's that affecting us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clarification. Are there any other questions?
Are we...
On this, on this subject?
We're going to finish, right?
No?
No, they're not. Okay, so I do have a question.
For ESER?
Well, not really ESER part, just a general question. So I saw in the news where the city of Cape Coral is trying to take, or wanting to take half cent, half of, you know, some of our money for charter, for their charter school, you know, have the half-cent sales tax. What impact would that have on us? You may not have that information, so, but I'm, and I'm not curious, I don't really know the details of what they're really asking for, but I know they're wanting to take some of the half-cent sales tax. And what impact would that be on the district? And what impact would that, I mean, now does that open that up for other charter schools as well? Like, what does that look like?
I know, so Mr. Puy Bruno may want to speak to this as well, because I know we had a conversation, and she was looking into some things related to the law. To my knowledge, I don't, I don't believe that we have the opportunity to pick and choose what charters we choose with, we either, what charters we share with, rather. You either share or you don't.
Right.
So generally, charters are 13% of our population, so we would be looking at if we just did that by a population share, then that would be 13% of that revenue that would be out to the different schools if we chose to share. Currently, we don't have to. If there's any new, remember that statute went into play, I think it was last year, if I remember correctly, so that any new referendum that goes forward, there is a mandate to share with charters, but our referendum went through before that, so we don't have to do that. And recall that we had that discussion when we talked about actually going for the referendum and how we were going to do that, and for various reasons chose at that particular point in time not to choose. But just to respond to your question about what the impact is, it would be if you were just looking at the population, about 13% of the revenue.
Thank you.
And Mr. Puy Bruno, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that?
I don't have anything to add to that at this time.
Okay.
And then Ms. Morgan?
From a capital point of view, there are differences in the charter schools. The Oasis charter has been built according to state standards. So effectively, any investment we make in that school with our capital dollars is a safe investment. It's a different problem if we're giving capital dollars to regular charters, because we don't have, we don't own those schools, we don't own that property, that's a lost cost. If we ever got to the point where the Cape was, became really aggressive, we talked at the board table, gosh, I raised it, I'm going to say six years ago when this last came up, that there's no reason we can't incorporate the Cape inventory into our inventory and effectively renovate, maintain whatever on the same basis we do our own buildings. So rather than giving out on a per student or whatever basis, because some of their buildings are a lot newer than ours, we would effectively put them in the same building hall and set up the schedule accordingly. So I mean, I think, I think if it becomes a serious issue, then we do need to think about negotiating with just that charter, and so that we don't end up letting them drive a requirement for all of our capital.
That's interesting.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That was my concern, thank you.
Yeah. And then Ms. Patrika, you have...
I thought I remembered at that time, when we were pursuing the half penny sales tax, that we did a calculation that showed the disproportionate amount of PICO dollars that the charter system had received. And the sitting council at that time looked at those numbers and said, you're right, we don't have an argument for additional revenue here.
Could be.
Am I wrong? Is my memory serving me?
No, that's true, in that we did have information related to PICO dollars and how the charters had received over that time period leading up to the referendum, the bulk of the PICO dollars, and in fact, all of the PICO dollars for a couple of years in there, including this current year. I don't remember the council looking at that information and saying, okay, we're going to back off. I don't recall that piece, but I do know that we, one of the discussions and the points at which we determined not to share at that point was, you know, that was one of the talking points related to that.
Okay, thank you.
And do we have any other questions? I know we're over a few minutes, but I think you just have two more pages, right?
I do, yes, for this part.
So go for it.
So we're still doing a lot of work, so the numbers haven't settled. We still have to settle on the details and the issues with ESER funds, and that's, you know, we have our items in place, but we still don't know, again, what the Department of Education is going to require of us, so things could change based on that as well. I do want to let you know that you probably will not see the SR2 and SR3 dollars in the tentative budget when it moves forward, because it is coming through the federal area, which usually we don't put in the budget until the funds are awarded. So I just want you to be aware that you will not see that in the tentative budget unless we're awarded those dollars prior to the time of the tentative budget. We still are working on determining the overall student growth and the impact, which is the kindergarteners as well. Ms. Patrika, we are working to look at that. We're still waiting for them to show up, so. Then we're going to make the final decisions on the priorities with all funding sources. We're going to look at compensation and finalize our fund balance numbers, as well as our revenues and our expense estimates. The timeline that we're looking at is July 19th, is when the Department of Education will send us, they are required to have the second calculation to us with the new millage rate set. July 22nd, you will receive all of the documents for the tentative budget and the advertisements that will be taking place on Friday, July 23rd. We will be advertising, which is required by... We will be advertising, which is required by TRIM. So we'll be doing that on Friday, the 23rd. And then on July 27th, we will have our first tentative budget hearing on the FY 22 budget. And then on September 8th, we will have our final budget hearing on, at that time. I just wanted to point out that there was an additional document in your handout on the positions that are still being considered. Nothing has been finalized at this point. Those are just positions and, and adjustments in positions that we are considering. We still have to meet and go through some final changes on those.
Okay. So, so given we're at the end of our time and we still have the capital portion of the budget to do, that'll be our continuation for tomorrow. It'll be all capital all the time tomorrow.
I just have one question that I'll ask Ms. Kittens. So these positions that you have open, these are positions that have already been there? We're not creating these positions?
There are different pages. There, the one page is new positions that are being requested for next year. There is a page of reclassification. So those are current positions that people are asking to have changed. There are transfers of positions where they're transferring a position just from one area to another position, another area. And then there are recommended eliminated positions, positions that due to either retirements or vacancies or some, some reason, they're looking at removing those positions from the budget.
Okay, so the new positions, do they come before us to?
Yes. They will be part of the tentative budget. You will receive that information with the tentative budget.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
And just tagging along to that, on the changing positions, the ones that exist but are being changed, do they not need to come back before us as well? Because is there a difference in cost as well?
In some cases, there are adjustments in cost. Sometimes, I think I highlighted in, I think it's pink, the ones that are just a funding source change. There might be a grant that is going away and so they're changing the funding to another area. So it could be some of those. But again, at the tentative budget, those items will be presented to you as well.
Okay. And one good thing, and you can bring it tomorrow, one of your items on the previous slide, you talked about student growth and capacity. And I, I don't know if that's a part of your presentation tomorrow, but I would really like to see some data on, on that with the growth, capacity and, you know, in conjunction with FISH reports and all that. Where are we on that?
I'm sorry, you said in conjunction with what?
Some updated information on our growth and capacity and how we're looking at it. That to me is such a, a significant piece and cornerstone of what we do. And I would like to, you know, at least see how do we get to those numbers of growth and capacity? Because that is what drives everything. It depends on, you know, if you do the numbers one way or you do it another way. And I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying I would really like to see how that is done. I've asked for that, but I haven't really received and understood that, how that fits into our future planning and all as well.
Understood.
And Ms., were you finished, Ms. Kittens?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
So I'm looking at new positions paralegal for a board attorney. I would like to see the overall proposal for legal and how that fits into that before I would approve that. I mean, as, as I understand it, we've got significant holes in legal department and I have no idea at this point how they're gonna be plugged. And so I, I thought we were gonna get a presentation about that in May. It's, we're two weeks away from our staff attorney leaving and I don't really know what's going on. So I would like another, yet another prioritized subject to be what's happening with legal and how does that position fit in? Please and thank you.
Thank you. Is, are there any other, Ms. Morgan?
So I was gonna say, say the same thing. First of all, proposed positions haven't been approved. So just because they're here doesn't mean they're gonna be in the budget. And, and then I would, I was going to say the same thing that Ms. Patrica said. I want to see our legal services profile all of the money that we've spent the last couple of years, how it's been allocated, how it's going to be allocated going forward before we entertain any new positions.
All right, before we entertain any new positions.
Any other questions, concern, comments? Ms. Kittens?
Are we gonna put the, that legal piece on our agenda to workshop it soon? Because, yeah, I, I think we need to, to look at that as well. I agree with them. We need to know sooner than later what is the, the plan. And since we now have the new superintendent and that falls under his purview, then I'm, I don't know if you, if you wanted to address that at all and say, is that in the works or?
Who want to address that?
To address that it's, this is just completing the first week as of today. I've had a chance to meet with most board members, most of the senior staff, as well as with the attorneys, both our board attorney and our staff attorney. So we're very well aware of the two of our attorneys who are leaving. And it is certainly of one of our highest priorities to make sure that we are hearing all sides and kind of considering a lot of different variables, looking at what the current work is. That's a hot, top priority item for us right now as well.
Anyone else, please? Saying none. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, you are done, right? That was it? Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see you again tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
Could we have a break?
A break?
Yeah, before we start.
I think we're done, aren't we? There are no other?
We have the agenda review.
We have the two questions and we've already done.
There's still my one question hasn't been answered. He wanted, they wanted to wait. And I think that's it.
So we have one question and then?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So do you need a break or shall we move forward, ladies?
I apologize.
Okay. Dr. Savage, please?
So before we get into the questions, I just want to also make sure that we know there have been two more items added for good cause. Just kind of want to reiterate as a, just a mention of why these are happening. Of course, with the condensed summer and knowing that we have a very, currently on the schedule, there was not another meeting until late July. There's a lot of press for some of these issues, such as the Capital Strategies that you've already seen, as well as the Department of Health original contract that's in there. I just wanted to make sure that I let the board know some of the why on that particular piece. The first is an approval of the contract between the state of Florida Department of Health and the school board of Lee County. That item, the reason why it's being added, just from a time sensitivity standpoint, is that this allows for six school nurses to start on July 1st. And it's the last meeting prior to that date, at least as currently scheduled. It was submitted by the deadline, but due to a procedural issue within the board doc system that's being fixed, it did not move through our typical approval process. But again, we don't want to disrupt that critical employment and so that's, that's one piece. The other is just for the administrative recommendations, just to ensure that their folks are, because we are in such a compressed summer, to ensure that either departments or just our district schools are not unduly interrupted and have to wait and have, be down those staff members. So that's another reason for those appointments. Some of those things, such as surprises when a particular person retires suddenly, that has a residual impact along those lines. So those are things that we are moving on as briskly as possible, but want to make sure that you all have that information as well.
I'm sorry, the last one, what, the last one is part of a good cause, what you just spoke about?
A good cause of personnel recommendations.
So that's three good causes versus two?
Yes. So I have F1, H18, and then the others, I don't have it listed, but it's under, it's under our human resources, under our typical personnel area. So it's administrative personnel. That's also a good cause, my understanding.
Already posted. Is it already posted or?
Is it?
I'm not sure if it's posted here.
No.
Yeah, on my list here, it's not showing up yet.
It's not here.
Mm-hmm. But that's why I specifically wanted to mention it now, that that, if it is not present, then it will be shortly, should be in the system for you to be able to view shortly, if not readily. That's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, that that is a late addition today.
Are there any comments about that one?
Ladies? We've got some there.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. So then do you want to clarify, like what those positions are, since they're not listed now?
Yes, so there were, there were some other additional movements that would typically be individually briefed to the superintendent. Those were not, over the weekend, I polled those items, so they would not be included in this particular item. Just the significance of like school level leadership and whatnot, wanted to make sure those things are addressed. The remainder of them are typically coordinator or below positions that typically do not receive the same level of individual briefing. And so those are present. We do have staff here to speak to any of those if there are any individual concerns or questions about any of those staff movements, things such as appointments, change of assignment and retirements and so forth.
Looking on board docs, it's not, it's still not, yeah, it's not showing up on board docs right now.
The last two haven't been posted yet.
Wonderful.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kittens?
All right, so they are in the process of approval. We just want to notice the board accordingly to be on the lookout for those good cause items and just the nature of why they're coming in that, that way, in that fashion.
So, may I ask?
Ms. Kittens, go ahead, please.
Okay, so does that include some of the ones that, I'm trying to say this delicately, that we've had a lot of discussion and input on?
That's, that's part of the reason why the delay in the process is that, you know, over the weekend made the determination that those items should be removed from that item just to give our public more chance to react to those items, as well as just to, to make sure we have an opportunity internally to consider all options, make the best decision. We, again, a lot of what precipitates these movements is there isn't another meeting, at least there wasn't until late July. Knowing that any potential like school leadership positions and things of that nature are so significant and you do not want, in a short summer, you want to give principals every opportunity to prepare, to hire, to work with their staff, to get their master schedule done, things of that nature. They're so significant that we are under a definite rush to get those decisions made. But we'd really like to make sure that the decisions we put forward are, are the right decisions, the best interest of all students in the community. We really value the community and especially on the eve of the pandemic, we just want to be as deliberate and thoughtful as possible in those decisions. We do anticipate some recommendations coming in sooner, we're trying to get another meeting scheduled as soon as possible to ensure that we can make those placements so that if we have other critical positions we need to fill, we don't have to wait until late July to do so.
Okay. And I do have one further question. On the principal and assignment position for Judy Johnson, can we get any further information as to what that will be, what her duties will be, or do we know yet?
I do not have any of that information right now.
And Attorney Bruno, can you?
That would be HR, wouldn't it not?
Believe that, that, that individual's on administrative leave, is that assignment?
Okay, all right. Well, perhaps Attorney Bruno, you can let us know individually if you have to because of the sensitivity of it at a later date, what that is about.
Okay, and I had a question. Ms. Kittens, you made a statement about conversation that you've had and input that you've had on some of these changes. When did that occur?
We all have. There was, there was.
Oh, I, I have it. That's why I'm kind of curious on where, what you were referring to.
I've received quite a, I saw quite a few emails about some of the potential changes. And Ms. Fisher weighed in on it, so would you like?
Oh, you're speaking on what, the public had sent emails inquiring about a certain individual, but that was not a conversation that anyone had.
I didn't, I'm just saying.
So what conversation was?
I received conversa, I received calls about it and we all received emails about it. They were directed to the whole board. So I don't know why everyone else didn't see emails about that situation, but.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I think she's talking about two different things. One is the situation with the school change that we all got emails about. So we all got those emails. But there's also all kinds of rumors about other changes. And I have not had my initial meeting with the superintendent.
Correct.
So I have no clue what people are talking about.
That's why I asked that question. What was the conversation?
I'm confused, but anyway, that's all right.
Are there any other comments? So as far as the?
The questions for the board, the one question that remains for the board agenda review, I have that as well?
Yes.
Is that visible to them? Posted?
Yes, this is on a.
Okay. So this, Madam Chair, may I proceed with the?
Yes, please.
So this is for item F1 in the, under the consent, the approval of the contract for professional services with Capital Strategies Consulting. The first question that was asked was from Ms. Vaughn. She said that received an answer during the presentation. The second question was from Ms. Givinelli. The question specifically was, this is an annual contract. Did this go out for an RFP initially? Should we at this time? There should be opportunity for all. I am concerned that we have not allowed for that. So the person who's gonna be speaking to that is Dr. Desmore's? Dr. Desmore?
May I clarify?
Please, Ms. Givinelli, go ahead.
I didn't ask the question, is it an annual contract? I know it's an annual contract. So, but my question was initially, which is like three or four years ago, you know, and this is just me thinking, and that's why I'm just curious. I'm not trying to change anything at this time and, but I think consciously, we need to think about that as a board, making sure that, you know, since it is annually, do we make a contract longer where a renewal process, you know, how does that look? And as a board, how do we want to talk about that? You know, and, and I guess, I just want to make sure that we, I don't think this went out for bid, is my question. I don't, if I remember the way this came about. And so I just was trying to get a little more insight on it for the community.
Thank you. So, yes, we did do an ITN, which is Invitation to Negotiate, in August of 2017. We had four respondents at that time and for various reasons, each of the respondents were deemed not acceptable for the evaluation committee. So at that point, we sought independent negotiations and then negotiated a contract with Capital Strategies as is authorized to do. So that's the history behind that and we can, in the future, move forward, however the board would determine. But that was the history behind how we came with Capital Strategies.
Thank you. Ms. Givinelli, do you have?
So it, and it's not a continuous contract, but yet kind of is. So I mean, as a board, do we want to have that conversation? I mean, my question is, are, you know, are we getting the best bang for our buck? You know what I mean? And, and I just want to make sure because I mean, there's other, you know, there's other lobbyists that are right there in Tallahassee. Is it more beneficial to have our lobbyists here? I mean, there's just several questions, because this board has changed. Y'all, some of this board was not part of that process. And so I'm just trying, as we, you know, board changes a little bit. We've not allowed everyone to have a seat at the table and talk about it. And that's where, really where I was with this.
No, thank you, thank you for that. I don't know, is there any one else that would, Ms. Fisher?
I do, and I apologize that I didn't send these ahead of time.
Fisher, was that part of, did you have anything to add to Ms. Givinelli's before you start on yours?
Just that, well, maybe I would ask Dr. Desmore then, if that, isn't that an annual renewal?
It is, it is.
So it comes before us annually?
It's in our, it's our budget now. I mean, it's today to, tomorrow to vote on. That's why I brought it up, is, because it's when I, made me think about it.
Right.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, and, and I apologize for being late with this, but H14 is Elk Mountain School in Idaho for a special needs student placement for $255,500. And I was just wondering, you know, how do we, how do we review those types of placements and know their history record, the length of time they've been in business, et cetera?
There, I think I have it on now. Good afternoon. That is a school that we have been doing business with under ClearView Academy. We actually do visit school sites when we have to employ a residential placement. And we have done that in the past. And we also are in communication very frequently with the school and their staff. So we ensure that they meet all of the Florida requirements for providing services to students with disabilities.
And is there specific data regarding that or any kind of reports from? And is there specific data regarding that, or any kind of reports from local agencies in Idaho, regarding their history of success with students?
That I would have to check into.
Okay, thank you.
And Teresa, can you please say who you are, and what department you're from?
I'm sorry, I'm Teresa Bowen, the Director of Exceptional Student Education.
Thank you.
That particular placement is, there are very few that offer the services that are afforded to students. So that is one of very few, for that age bracket.
So then, then we have, this is a contract that was in existence before this year?
Correct. We've been contracting with ClearView Academy for several years. That is through an Individual Education Plan, and we have there, that is a new name of the program because of the age of the student. But it is the same company.
Okay, thank you. And then, H17, Collaboration with Equal Opportunity School. I, I don't, I don't know exactly.
There was a presentation on that.
What, what that Equal Opportunity School is.
There is a presentation tomorrow.
I think tomorrow, they're presenting something on that.
Oh, there is?
Yes, there's a formal presentation tomorrow, where we're going to be.
Are you to the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And then, my final one is the public hearings on charter schools. I see that some of the renewals are 15 years. 15 years is a long time, and I was just wondering, is there any kind of specific criteria, and what are their success rates and history, and the financial impact?
We don't have Ms. Kennedy here, do we?
She's at FASA, but we can get that information for you, and make sure you have that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jivinelli, I know you had a question, and then Ms. Gittens.
Back to the H14, made me think of a question. Is this for a particular student?
Yes.
So, are these services occurring? That's what I'm, like, how long do we continue doing this?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I just want to caution that the student does have FERPR privacy rights, so in that discussion, please keep that in the back of your mind.
Thank you, thank you for that.
So in general terms, a placement like this is made by an Individual Education Plan team, and when that discussion is occurring and made, it is determined that the school district does not have the services available in the district in order to provide a free and appropriate education to the child. In circumstances such as this, as I was talking to Mrs. Fisher earlier, there are some specific services that are very hard to find, and that is why it is even outside of the state.
Okay. I was just trying to see the date of the services. Is this for one year?
This contract is for one year, and we do meet on Individual Education Programs at least one year. So the decision is revisited at least once a year, but can be revisited at any time during that year.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Gittens?
Just a quick question. When, when we have a student, and I can't remember what happened when I was teaching, but we get a student, and, and we don't have records or anything like that, and we have to place them, what, what do we, how do we do that? If we don't have anything, is there, do they just place Gen Ed across the Board for their schedule until we get it? And what if we never do?
So are you speaking about a student with a disability?
If, yes, or even that, or a regular student, but especially a disability. If we didn't get information from anywhere, or they didn't come with, you know, all of their records, how, how do we handle that?
So this happened pretty recently with the hurricanes, when we were getting students that did not have any records, and there were no schools that could provide records. The state does give us some leeway in talking with the parent, and finding out if they were in a specialized program, and to create a plan for them to move forward. Generally, we are requesting records, and we don't have that problem in getting records and placing them appropriately based off of the records we receive, so.
Okay, I just wondered. My, my other question is academic, but I'll wait till Good of the Order.
Thank you for that question. Okay, are there any other questions? So you have one more question, Ms. Gittens? Because I know.
I, I.
Because of questions.
Okay, it's, it's not necessarily based on this. May I ask it now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I read recently, was sent an article, and read an article about one of the districts, I think it was Hillsboro one, that got their results back of the third grade, FSA results are back. And I understand that we received ours as a district last week sometime, and I'm wondering about an update. Surprisingly, some districts have found that there was not the, the tremendous slump that they thought there would be. And I just thought that was very interesting, and it kind of tweaked my interest to know how did we do? And are those, is that data out there for us to see, or how, how it, you know, where is it? Can we find out how we did?
And who was that, Dr. Spira?
Dr. Spira.
Thank you. Yes, we do have that data available. We are actually in the midst of looking through all, through that particular piece, but I'm happy to share with you our district average, as well as each school as well, so you could see that. And that's just one data point, certainly we're waiting on the rest of the results to come in, as through the course of the summer. But I'm happy to send that to the entire Board.
And can we kind of have a thumbs up, or sideways, or down, if we did really bad, or worse, or better, or?
We did not, we, and I don't remember that exact number off the top of my head, but we did not increase from last year, and certainly we were not intending certainly doing, not last year, but actually the year before. I mean, certainly we're not expecting to increase, but I believe it was a five to a seven percent drop, and I'd have to, I don't want to quote me on that number.
No, I'm not holding your.
It's only accountable till I have that back in front of me. But I will certainly send that to the Board today.
So what, was it as bad as we anticipated?
It's really a loaded question, because our progress, I was going to say, because our progress monitoring along the way really did not show as, as big as a dip as other places have been saying they have been. So we were not expecting a huge dip in this particular area.
And we were not disappointed. Anyway, I'm sorry.
They're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Jivinelli?
Well, since Ms. Fisher, Ms. Fisher brought up the H17, which is the Equal Opportunity Schools, I know we, this was pulled prior to, and now it's coming back. I was going to wait until tomorrow for the presentation, but, and I will still, but I, I have a few questions, that maybe the information tomorrow will, it will have it. But I would be curious, like, how many students are we going to be at these high schools? How many school, students will be participating? And, and then, my other question is, you know, what are we doing in the lower levels versus, you know, I still, my, when I pulled this a month or so ago, my questions, I hope, will be answered tomorrow, regarding, you know, what are we doing in the lower levels compared to, by high school, we're missing it. So I feel like this is, you know, kind of like, not, you know, it's a little late, too late, you know, to try to save students, if that's what this is. But I'll wait for tomorrow, I just want to put those, you know, those questions out there.
Just as a quick comment to that, one of the, the two prongs that they typically go is to increase the access, but also increase the achievement. You know, we really want to try to broaden our reach, so we're reaching more and more students in our, in our district. And that's really a lot of districts everywhere, but then also to attain the highest possible standards. I know that Dr. Spira and his team have some great information ready to present tomorrow in that presentation. Is there anything that you want to add, sir, at this time, or?
Just as a preview, remember, Equal Opportunity Schools is not a curriculum. It's a service that, that's provided to help us do exactly what Dr. Savage is talking about, really to identify opportunities for students. And then, we've talked before a little bit about what we've done in the middle school as well. And so we'll make sure we include a piece of that in our presentation, so you can see what we're doing at the other levels, to make sure students are ready once we get to high school. But it is certainly a process. And thank you for those questions ahead of time. We'll make sure they're addressed.
Well, and like, so we have data that shows there's, there are successes in other schools who are using it, and that kind of thing, and, and what, you know, their data is, and the outcome of it. So I would just like to see all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like there's no other questions, so we are moving to, I know there's something going on in here shortly. So we are at the Good of the Order. Does anyone have anything for the Good of the Order? Ms. Kathleen Morgan?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Just, nothing new, except things that, I guess I should mention about EDAC. As a matter of fact, at this point, EDAC did decide last Monday to have a June meeting, which, which we had. And the focus was taking a look at different presentations and topics that had been presented to the committee. And there was an activity where small groups put their input, you know, on, on the papers, and, and then we came back as a, as a large group, and, and took a look at the various concerns that had arisen through the different presentations, and concerns, and recommendations. So that will be, the, the Chair is, with the help of Board Liaisons, or not, I'm sorry, the Staff Liaisons, kind of tidying up the language on that. So there will be some recommendations coming to the Board from, from EDAC. Our meeting, I think, I love the group. It's a long meeting. It was, I think, we were there for two, two hours, and, but we got a lot done.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Ms. Gittens?
I have a couple of things, but I'll save them. But one thing I do want to put out there, food for thought for my colleagues, is I work with staff to make sure that the webpage on Superintendent Church, search, church, whoa, Superintendent Search is updated. And I feel where we need to put out there some timeline as to, you know, a little more information as to what we're doing. And I know we had a meeting today, but I'd like to get with you, Madam Chair, to make sure that I'm hearing what I'm hearing before we put it out there. So if we can discuss that, that would be great. And are there any other questions or comments about the webpage?
No, I think you're doing a great job, and thank you so much for taking that on. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Ms. Patrica?
So I've got two things, and they're perhaps legal questions, or questions for staff to do a little digging, and get back to us with the permissibility of these two things, as we discuss our legislative platform. Number one, student involvement in advocacy. Suwannee County, I'm sorry, Suwannee School District, last year had students do four or five different advocacy videos, and they were phenomenal, and they were very moving. And I'd like the Board to consider whether you have an appetite for creating a new award. Perhaps we could award the Student Legislative Advocate of the Year each year moving forward. When I was a student, things like awards and winning stuff really motivated me. So perhaps that would be a way to get our students more engaged. What is the legality of that, and to what extent? I don't want the answer now. I want you thinking about it when we come up on the workshop. And the second question is, parents, I know I've asked this question, parents opting into a phone and/or email system, so that we could send out calls to action during legislative session. That would have been wonderful this year with the whole, oh, best and brightest thing. And if we could keep parents that engaged on items that are less interesting to them, then we might see more success during legislative session. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jivinelli?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jivinelli. Ms. Fisher?
I have none this afternoon either. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have none. And Mr. Pre Bruno?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you. And Superintendent?
Well, I just thank you, Madam Chair, if I just may have a minute. Just wanted to say, you know, it's, it's a pleasure to be completing the first seven days of this remarkable assignment, beginning kind of a week ago today, actually, this, this evening. And I kind of predicted that I would make at least one mistake within the first week, and I wanted to publicly apologize. I think it's really important as a, as a district, but specifically me, as, as your interim superintendent, that any time a mistake is made, there's an opportunity to own that mistake, and to say, you know, when, when we do those mistakes, we have to make it, and so we have to own it. And so I just wanted to publicly apologize to, you know, our staff and our community, and to you as a Board, that any time you're put in a difficult position on controversial items, it really falls on my shoulders to, to address that. So I want to take full accountability for any of the emails and so forth that may have come in over this weekend, about an item that, that I mishandled. Just wanted to take full ownership of that. And I just want to reiterate that our staff, especially our leadership staff, they absolutely put children at the forefront of every decision they make. I can assure you, children are at the forefront. And so any decisions that are made, or recommendations that are made, that is what drives our staff. And I can say that, that it's, that's, I've observed it my entire career, but I really had the chance to observe it in action last week. So, so just in spite of the fact that sometimes things do tend to, you know, if there's a mistake that's made, that, that really is on my shoulders and mine alone. So I just wanted to say that publicly, and just apologize also to our community, who were put through some, some trying times, which is the last thing anyone needs on the heels of a pandemic and closing down a great school year. But just wanted to, we take the good with the bad, and it's a learning opportunity for me, and just really appreciate that piece. So with that said, that is all I have.
Well, thank you so much. And I will just say, too, I definitely appreciate all staff that's been here, that worked so, so hard for the district, each and every one of them. And we are here, and we support you all, just so that you know that. And so you know other business to come before this report, this meeting is adjourned, and we will see you tomorrow. Thank you.